Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Geneva, Illinois Committee of the Whole meeting. It's Monday, April 9th, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. My name is Jean McGowan. I am one of the aldermen for the 4th Ward here in Geneva, along with Alderman Rodecky. Let the record show that all aldermen are present, and we will begin going through the items on tonight's agenda. And I will speak a little louder. I feel like I'm not speaking loud enough here. Okay. Item number two on the agenda is to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes from March 26th, 2018. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Marks.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. And is there any discussion or questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's been awhile since I've run up one of these meetings. Okay.
Any opposed?
Oh, any opposed? Any opposed? Alright, nobody is opposed. I'm hearing none, seeing none. So, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item A, under number three, Items of Business. Recommend suspending the rules to permit Alderman McGowan, that would be me, to be the Committee of the Whole Chairman for this meeting, and to vote on all action items on this agenda. And this requires a two-thirds majority vote.
So moved.
Second.
By Alderman Bruno, and seconded by Alderman Marks. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, wonderful. Thank you for that. That was unanimous. And moving on to item B. Oh, and I did not vote on that. My vote is aye. Okay. I vote for myself to have run this meeting. Item B, recommend draft resolution authorizing acceptance of proposal to bind coverage for property, commercial liability, excess workers' compensation, inland marine, crime, cyber liability, and excess liability insurance coverage effective May 1st, 2018. And we do have representatives from Gallagher Insurance and Risk Management Consulting with us this evening. Jessica Govick, who's our area exec-- or the area Executive Vice President, and Tia Incaprico, Incaprio, who is the account executive. Incaprio? I said that correctly? Okay, good. So are there any questions or discussions regarding this issue? Oh, a motion. Sorry. So a motion to, just for clarification. Okay, sorry.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Cummings, and seconded by Alderman Bergert. Okay, now, is there any questions, comments, discussion? Alderman Kilberg?
Right. Could the representatives from Gallagher possibly provide some insight on the Illinois Public Risk Fund as it relates to workman's comp? And my question would be, how long has this been in existence? And has there been a dramatic change as it relates to their, their coverage and premiums? I guess just some background, and this looks as though this is going to be, provide the opportunity for some substantial savings over the next four or five years. Could you talk to that a little bit?
Sure. Is this on already? Okay. Hi, everybody. Again, Jessica Govick with Gallagher. Illinois Public Risk Fund was started in 1983, and currently has more than 600 communities in Illinois. It's a work-comp-only program for government entities. So again, over 600 government entities. The Illinois Public Risk Fund used to only quote on first-dollar risks, meaning that dollar-for-dollar insurance, workers' compensation coverage. So since the city of Geneva was on a self-insured retention, we hadn't brought this as an option to you in the past, because again, it was going to be much more expensive to go with Illinois Public Risk Fund than your current provider, which is Midwest. But since they, since last year, they started doing a self-insured retention option, which we have brought to you today, which again, saves the city a lot of money in terms of out-of-pocket expenses per claim. We love working with the Illinois Public Risk Fund. We're one of their largest brokers in the state of Illinois. And again, we would highly recommend, if the city is wanting to change carriers, that this would be a good option for you.
So that wasn't an option that was available previously?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. That's my only question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions or comments?
So, just so that I'm clear, when we vote, we kind of wanted to make sure, we didn't, we didn't assume that we would be going with the Illinois Public Risk Fund, so I want to make sure that that is the direction we're going when we take the vote, so we know what coverage we're actually binding. So unless I see objections, that is the, okay. Thank you.
So I guess we'll just take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item C. Recommend draft resolution authorizing waiver of bidding process and purchase of Itron 100W ERT water meters from Midwest Meter Incorporated at a cost per unit of $73, as approved in the fiscal year 19 budget. This will require two-thirds majority vote at the City Council. Is there a motion? Moved by Alderman Marks, seconded by, was that Alderman Cummings? Any discussion or questions regarding the water meters? I know we have Bob Engessen here from, he's the Superintendent of Water and Wastewater, City of Geneva. So, okay. Take another voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Moving on to item D. Recommend draft resolution proclaiming April 27th, 2018 as National Arbor Day. Is there a motion?
So, second.
Moved by Alderman Marks, seconded by Alderman Bruno. And Arbor Day is this Friday, April 27th. Any discussion, or anyone like to say anything? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. And moving on to item E on the agenda. Recommend draft resolution awarding bid and contract for audiovisual update project to ProCom Incorporated in the amount of $38,527.79. Is there a motion? Alderman Cummings, seconded by Alderman Ruby. Any questions or discussions? I didn't catch this in the packet, but Stephanie, do you happen to know when the audiovisual equipment in this room was last updated?
Oh.
That was like 10 years ago?
Pete.
Oh, there's Pete coming out of the back of the audiovisual room.
Because we've done different things at different times.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of, when we started, when did we go live? When did we start? Like 2006, '07? So that's probably about the last time. We did, we did the microphones a couple of years ago, but we, the cameras, yeah, probably 2006.
So, Pete, if this passes, when would you expect the work to be done or completed? And what changes? What are the biggest improvements that we would see, or that people in Geneva would see?
We should be done before May 1st. It's, it's, it's going to happen quickly. Eric's, I think, has lights going in here, these LED lights that do in here, probably do the rest of these, so we're going to try and do it all at once the next couple of weeks. But long and the short of it is, is these are SD security cameras, and, and so we're going to put in HD cameras instead. So while we can still only broadcast on Comcast and AT&amp;T and SD, we can, we can, when we record for broadcast, when we record for YouTube, we can record those in HD, so. Much clearer. We're going to add another camera right above your head that points right here, too, so.
Great.
Yes.
Alderman Cummings?
Do you think the public's going to be surprised that we actually don't look like Mario Kart?
I, I will say this, just watching the cameras in general, you guys on this side, and you guys on this side look fine. The angle is fine, but the stretch from that camera to shoot all the way here, the camera just kind of is grainy up there. So that's really probably the biggest thing. But, but you look much better on YouTube, Tom.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Pete. I've been wanting to upgrade the, the audio/video in here for awhile. I think it's, you know, when, when we're watching some of the videos, and it's just kind of blurry characters, you don't know who's talking, but it'll be nice to have some, some higher-quality stuff. And I think it'll be useful and helpful to the general public. Thanks.
Yeah. I think, I think it'll make, I think it'll make a big difference in, in how things look, so.
Alderman Ruby, do you have a question or comment?
No, I just have a silly comment. It was a big Wizard of Oz moment for me when you came out from the room and spoke at the podium. Just had to share that.
Every once in awhile. I'm here as much as you are.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Moving on to item F. Recommend draft ordinance imposing a non-home rule municipal retailer's occupation tax, and a non-home rule municipal service occupation tax effective July 1st, 2018. And obviously, this is in regard to the sales tax referendum that recently passed. Is, motion? Sorry.
Second.
Okay, so, motion by Marks, seconded by Cummings. And any discussion? Okay, let's take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. And moving on to item number four, new business slash public comments. Are there any, any comments or new business? From the, from the, yes, from the floor, please come forward. And just kindly state your name and address for the record.
Tom Simonian, 921 South, Potavia Ave. Get a little handouts here for you. I was planning on being here last week during the budget public hearing, but as I was walking up the sidewalk, I got unfortunately a call. An emergency happened at one of my stores, so I had to leave. So I am here today to, to speak on behalf of my thoughts and opinions regarding the, the budget and a couple of items within that budget. My purpose here this evening is to address the City Council with my concerns that the city of Geneva is following a tax-and-spend philosophy similar to that of Springfield. If not addressed now, I believe Geneva, as a non-home rule community with limited control over taxes, will end up with no other options in the future but to dramatically impact public safety, infrastructure, and services. Included in the information I passed out to you shows that Illinois collected about $29.4 billion in general fund revenue for fiscal 2017, a decrease of almost $1 billion from the previous year, 2016. The general funds expenditures for the same 2017 fiscal year was $34 billion. That leaves a $4.6 billion shortfall. Add to that, in 2017, a record $16.7 billion of state unpaid bills backlog, and $123 billion in unfunded pensions, and you wonder why Illinois lost a net $33,703 residents in 2017. That's a net, the largest exodus of any state in the country. And unfortunately, the folks that are leaving are the ones who provide the financial and economic wherewithal that Illinois needs to hopefully get out of this financial crisis. As of today, to cover Illinois's financial obligations, every man, woman, and child in the state of Illinois would have to write a check for over $8,000. So if you were, if you were married with three children, you'd have to write a check for over $40,000 just to cover the obligations of today. And that still does not solve the problem of a general fund revenue, of general fund revenues not being able to cover expenditures. Illinois got here because of many years of a tax-and-spend mentality with little and no effort towards reducing or managing expenses. If the expenditures exceeded the revenue, just increase current taxes or come up with some new tax, soda tax, sugar tax, places for eating tax. Don't do anything crazy like manage or reduce the expense side of the balance sheet. Not easy to do, or for the faint of heart, but it is the fiduciary responsibility of each of our elected officials. Relying on Springfield to guarantee funds being distributed in the future to communities like Geneva is a bet I would not be willing to take with taxpayer dollars. This brings me to Geneva's budget, that you all voted on last week. Unfortunately, I'm saddened to say that Geneva embraces the same tax-and-spend mentality as Springfield, has been doing it for several years, and continues to do it in this most recent approved budget. If revenues don't satisfy expenditures, then let's increase taxes evidence this most, in this most recent half-percent citywide sales tax referendum. And if that should fail, we'll implement a 2-percent places for eating tax. This is coming off of a $1.26 million surplus in the budget two years ago, and an estimated $2.04 million surplus in the most recent budget. As most of you know, when I was alderman, I was not in favor of either tax until the city looked at managing and reducing expenses. On a side note, I don't think anyone in the city of Geneva or the state of Illinois would not be willing to pay more taxes as long as we can trust government is transparent, honest, and fair. And when I say fair, both to employees and to taxpayers. Again, to both employees and taxpayers. With a tax-and-spend mentality and to completely avoid even discussions about cutting real expenses, not cutting, watering for the beautification committee, or charging administrative fees for the cultural arts committees, but real expenses. With a tax-and-spend philosophy and public loss, the public loses their faith in government and their elected officials. I want to share with you my thoughts about the budget that was passed last week. The actual 2012-2013 budget was $60.2 million. The proposed 2018-2019 budget is $103.2 million. It's a 55.74% increase in six years, which comes out to an average annual budget increase of 9.29%. The county board, for their most recent budget, and to their credit, voted a 3.6 across-the-board budget cut with everything on the table, including compensation. Geneva, on the other hand, is proposing a 14.53% general fund increase and a 23.33% overall budget increase over last year. And here are some of the facts based on the information that was provided in last week's packet. Just like I said, general fund increases 14.53% from last year. Total fund budgets, 23.33% increase from last year. Wages, 8.94% increase from last year. Part-time wages in seasonal, 37.4% increase over last year. Total wages, 9.49% increase over last year. Group insurance, 9.36% increase over last year. IMRF, 15.4% increase over last year. Administrative services, 90.68% increase over last year. And here's the most ironic piece of this equation. Tri-city ambulance and TRICOM, which is a service we outsource, was down 20.05%. At this time, I want to address one of the largest impactors to the 2018-2019 general fund budget increase, the gap study pay increases. The majority of the City Council agreed to have a study done to see if our employee-staff were being compensated competitively, since the last competitive study was done over 10 years ago, with the following conditions. Aldermen need to be involved in the process to avoid a conflict of interest, whether perceived or real. Total compensation is to be included, salary and benefits, compared to non-home rule communities with like-sized staff population and demographics, and compared to like-jobs in the private sector. This was the will of the council. Instead, staff submitted a presentation and study that did not include aldermen, only included salary, partnered with Potavia and the comparison communities where more, which were more in line with Potavia than Geneva, and only a few like-jobs were compared to the private sector. And FYI, I had dinner with a, an alderman from Potavia a couple of weeks ago, and they haven't even, that, the study hasn't even been presented to their, to their council as of that date. It took months for the study to be done, and was presented at a Cal meeting where the presentation and information I handed out tonight was not even included in the packet for the council's review. The council saw the presentation for the first time that evening, never saw the information I handed out tonight, and was expected to make a multimillion-dollar pay raise decision that night, with no time to review the information provided, or get factual answers to their questions from that evening. The information I provided you tonight could have been provided to the City Council, and should have been provided to the City Council, so they could have all the details of this multimillion-dollar decision available to them prior to a vote. Even though the staff and consultant did not follow the initial will of the council regarding the conditions of the study, the study still came back that our employees' salaries were competitive to the municipalities compared to, and our salaries were much more competitive to the few private-sector jobs compared to. The intent and spirit of the study was to make sure our folks were competitively paid. Yet seven members of this council chose to give pay increases to 80 non-union employees of $539,639, not including benefits which run about another $107,928, which makes the total cost to taxpayers for this pay raise of $647,567 in year one. The first-year pay raise comes out to an average pay raise of about 10.51% per employee, that includes benefits, taxes, et cetera. Every employee, every employee that was employed from last year received a pay increase that ranged from a low of 1.94% to 113.83%, and that does not include benefits or taxes, et cetera. While I was on the council, I never once was informed that we had a turnover problem due to competitive pay. To add salt in the wounds, the $647,567 first-year cost to taxpayers does not include the $156,000 cost to add an assistant city administrator. So you take $647,567 for pay raises, along with $156,000 for a new assistant city administrator, for a total of $803,567 of additional taxpayer dollars needed for this budget, or in excess of $4 million over the next five years. The other concern I have is that some or all of these funds were agreed upon to be pulled from our reserves. Couple of years ago, when we had the opportunity to execute our sign contract for the new signs for the entrances into the, the community, in that year versus over the next few years, would have saved the taxpayers $120,000 to $150,000. I recommended that we should take advantage of the savings. I was told the money was not in the budget. When I asked if we could use reserves and claw the money back in future years, I was told that was not what reserves were meant for, and it could negatively impact our bond rating. So I'm confused why we can't use reserves to save taxpayer dollars of $120,000 to $150,000, but we can use reserves for raises, benefits, taxes, et cetera, and an assistant city administrator. I voiced my concerns for years that there's a conflict of interest when one city employee negotiates another one's city employee's contract when their benefits are tied to that contract. I feel equally, if not more concerned, when you have a city administrator overseeing a study that results in her receiving a $4,500 pay raise, along with 79 other of her fellow employees. If this is not a conflict of interest, it surely is a perception of one. I'm asking our elected officials this evening to make a motion to reconsider the budget. And one, remove all the non-union pay raises, because our pay prior to the raises was a competitive one. And if you have added benefits and the Geneva factor, I believe we are a very competitive compensator. Two, remove the assistant city administrator position from, since we did not have that position filled, coming up on two years, and the city has run very well without the position. And three, reduce the group insurance amount from $2,620,000 to $1,885,000, because it was agreed by the council to maintain the insurance levels at 0% increase from the previous year. Lastly, I want to respond to a few comments that were made last week while you all were debating this matter. Alderman Bruno, you mentioned, and I quote, "You didn't want to wait until we had high turnover before we addressed salaries." Alderman Maladra, you commented, and I quote, "If we wait till we get to massive turnover, we are a little bit late in solving the problems we have." Both those comments assume there is going to be a, quote, "high turnover," according to Mr. Bruno, and a "massive turnover," according to Mr. Maladra, problem in the future, when to date, we have never had this problem, and the study concluded that our salaries were competitive. If you're going to govern on assumptions where there has been zero historical precedent, then how do you tell constituents in the 5th Ward, west of Route 31, whose basements flood every time there's a rain event, that you are more concerned about funding a possible problem that we may have in the future that we have never historically had, and a $40,000 recent study concluded that it is not a problem, instead of funding a problem we have had for years that impacts taxpayers, homes, investments, health, safety, and future development for the city? As Alderman Rodecky said, this is a solution looking for a problem. The citizens and taxpayers of Geneva have the right and expectation that the business of their government will be conducted to protect the public trust, and must be impartial in the performance of their duties. Otherwise, the public loses their faith and trust in government. As I said earlier, your decisions need to be fair to both the employees and the taxpayers of Geneva. In my opinion, this pay raise and budget is in no way fair to the taxpayers of Geneva. Thank you for the opportunity to exercise my First Amendment rights to share my thoughts and opinions regarding this budget. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Simonian. Anyone else? New business comments, questions?
Madam Chairman, I just have a couple of questions or comments. I'll direct them to the Chair. For clarification purposes, the study did not cost $40,000, as was clarified last week. The study was under $22,000. Number two, I would be interested if anyone here at this chamber, or anyone visiting us this evening can define in simple terms what this Geneva factor is. Madam Chairman, I would also ask that the gentleman who just spoke define what real expenses are. I would also ask for clarification regarding tri-city ambulance and TRICOM being an outsourced service. To clarify, last week, eight members of the council voted, I believe, in favor of the budget, not seven. Madam Chairman, I would also ask perhaps our city administrator, which might be the height of feeding the beast, or perhaps our city attorney, to comment on information that was provided to all the council members years ago regarding this perceived conflict of interest with respect, with respect to the city administrator, working with others to negotiate contracts. And lastly, Madam Chairman, I would argue that I find it ironic that the gentleman who just spoke complains about raising taxes, yet was one of the strongest advocates for the recently enacted sales tax, and had signs posted on his properties accordingly. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Burns, for that. Any other? Alderman Bruno?
Just for clarification, too, I think some of the numbers of the 500-some thousand dollars, that doesn't include monies that would have gone to merit increases to begin with, so that number's much smaller. And the, in terms of, there's a red herring with competitive, very competitive. The intent and the goal of the council was agreed on that our, our salaries would be at the midpoint of comparable communities. That's, that's all we've agreed on here. Thank you.
And I saw Alderman Maladra, he had your hand up.
I did. I'm just going to repeat some of what I said last week. You know, a business, a business invests in a lot of its capital. It invests in physical capital, it invests in capital projects, it invests in human capital. What we're doing here is choosing an amount to invest in our human capital. Several years ago, this council chose to do a gap analysis. The terms of that gap analysis were laid out very plainly in a contract with the firm that undertook it, and that contract was voted on unanimously to go ahead and execute that contract. And that's what we did. We executed that contract, and that contract revealed that there were, in fact, gaps in certain key position salaries. I've taken a look at the list that all former Alderman Simonian included. I looked at the big gaps, and I compared those positions to what's paid for those positions in comparable, non-home rule communities, and found that in some cases, even after we closed the gap, we're still below what's paid for in those other towns. And I don't say that to say we have to be like Town X, Town Y, or Town Z, but, but to say that we do compete for labor with other towns in other markets, to say that if there is indeed a Geneva factor that comes into play in that competition for employees, that the Geneva factor is weakened if we recognize a significant gap. for employees, that the Geneva factor is weakened if we recognize a significant gap in a position salary and do nothing to address it. Beyond that, I can say that there are disagreements among any body, any board, about exactly how a business or exactly specifically what actions a business takes, and those disagreements have been evident here as well. But the fact that we disagree does not mean that we are not being transparent, that we are somehow being underhanded, sneaky, and basically cheating the public. We're just disagreeing about certain business decisions, and that's what happened here. I don't personally feel that the decision we've made to invest in our human capital is a bad one. It's consistent with policy we've set and have had set for decades. It's consistent with policy that we've identified in our strategic plans as well as our employee handbooks and things like that. It's consistent with how we've chosen to run our business for a long time. If I felt that it was inconsistent with any of those policies, I would have voted against it. The dollar amount is daunting. It's also a little bit fuzzy. Some of it comes with, you know, expanding jobs to full-time instead of part-time and things like that. But what's more important to me is you look at where we have big gaps, you decide if that position is worth the median price or the midpoint price that the consultants say it is, and you aim to do that. If you don't do it with the employee you have, when that employee leaves, and I do think it would be a matter of when, then you're going to pay it when you hire the replacement. So again, I feel that our actions were consistent with our policies. They're consistent with what many other businesses do, and we are a business. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Yes, Alderman Rodecky?
Maybe we should have this discussion while we have a policy discussion, too, because I find one thing that's very curious to me is the setting policy and that we're going to go with what our policy was. The policy for the midpoint ranges was set by a council that was six elections ago. You know, we have policies that were set a year and a half ago by the most recent council, and I won't go through them to be argumentative, that have been completely abandoned by this council. So, you know, this looking backwards in history in rear-view mirror to say, hey, that was policy, so now we're going to go with it. We seem to pick and choose when it fits our needs, when it's really policy, or when it's not based upon what the history is in a rear-view mirror, because we've acted contrary to much more recent policy decisions than the ones that have been made about midpoint. So not to be, you know, I'm not looking to dredge up things and to make arguments over it, but it just seems as though we dart in and out as to when we think we want to cite a policy and when we don't want to cite a policy. So, you know, I think it's the policy of the current council that really matters, not those in history, because we've got a track record of doing that on many occasions. So it's just something that seems curious to me that, when it gets quoted all the time. So anyway, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? I saw Alderman Cummings, and then I actually have something on another topic I don't want to forget, but go ahead, please, Alderman Cummings.
Thank you. I would like to see the next salary and benefits study that we do, name the benchmark against which we compare ourselves. I think that that's fair. I think you do that in every business. I think you do it in every sport. What is a statistical joke is that we used one benchmark for salaries, one set of municipalities for salaries, and one set of municipalities for benefits. Now, either those municipalities are in our benchmark or they aren't. We, as a council, should say, here's who we like to compete against. When we lose someone, this is where they tend to go. Or we find ourselves most similar with the following group. Because the minute that you start changing benchmarks, you lose the public trust, and you lose some of the alderman's trust in the whole process. There are towns out there that are similar to ours, and I think we should be consistent in looking to compare ourselves to those towns. Back in the probably early '90s, I was at a school board meeting. We were talking about benchmarks, and they were comparing test scores against some of the far western school districts. And I thought and said, how about we look at benchmarks like Nutria? How about we look at Hinsdale rather than the benchmarks we're looking at in the far western part of the state? Benchmarks make a big difference. They do in sports, they do in business, they do personally. Everybody likes to strive towards something, but you can't go and change the benchmark constantly, especially twice in 12 months. We had a summer study, and we had a fall study, and they both used different benchmarks. So next time, 10 years from now or something, when we're all gone, maybe the institutional memory will be here, that that sitting council has at that point a benchmark that has been consistently used and applied against. And I think that the whole process would probably appear to be a lot more objective and a lot fairer. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, I, if I may, would like to switch topics, and I just wanted to thank all of the wonderful volunteers who helped me pick up litter along the Randall Road Parkway in Geneva this past Saturday morning. I'd also like to thank the Kane County Division of Transportation staff for assisting with this event. I would like to point out that several county highways in Geneva are available for adoption through the Kane County Adopt a Highway program, including Randall and Cusslinger Roads. So if you know of an individual or group that might be interested in adopting a highway, please contact Mary Ann Hoye, that's spelled H-O-Y-E, phone number 630-584-1171, and she can assist you with that. So any other new business? Okay, then, is there a motion to adjourn? By Alderman Bruno? Seconded by Alderman Ruby. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.